Okay, everyone, it is six o'clock, January 2nd, 2024, first meeting of 2024. Regular meeting of the agenda, the Township Board of Trustees, and if we could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, April, will you please let the record show that we are all present?
Yes, I will.
One exception, Brian, our planners will not be here tonight, just so everyone here knows. Okay, we're gonna move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to the approval of the agenda. I have nothing to add or delete.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, moving on to announcements and communications. Michelle, you have one?
I do have one. Okay, so everybody get ready, it's going to be presidential primary, yahoo. We will be starting, we have our public test, we're hoping on January 19th, we'll confirm that tomorrow, public test at 3:00 PM. And then I just wanted to let everyone know if you are interested in working or can work. We have nine days of early voting now, and we will be starting Saturday, February 17th, running through Sunday, February 25th. We will have one late night, which will be Thursday, the 22nd, and we will be open from noon to 8:00 PM to vote, and all the other days, Saturday through the following, Sunday to 25th, we will be early voting from 8:30 to 4:30 every day. So we're looking for about six to seven people per precinct, we only are gonna open one early, and then of course, we need lots of people on Election Day, the 27th, so if you're available or know someone interested in working, please send them our way.
Okay, thanks, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move to call to the public, or you can come up and talk about non-agenda related items, please keep it within three minutes and give your name and address for the writer. Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close call to the public, move on to reports. DDA?
Great, pardon me just one second, I have a slideshow I was gonna play just so you can view some pictures, so you don't have to look at me while I'm talking. So I included some items in your packets this evening, we had a wrap-up report from our lighting up the grand submitted by the committee, just some items to highlight. We had, the setup for the event occurred the Saturday after Thanksgiving, we had 31 volunteers who donated over 104 hours of volunteer service. We had over 75 displays, dropped over 100 stakes in the area for all the lights, with over 12,000 lights in total put up this year. At the event, we actually had a barbershop quartet singing carols throughout the location, we put together 150 gift bags for kids, and they were given out within the first 20 minutes of the event, actually. We had visitors using all four of our parking locations, including Dulson Elementary, Dr. Ruffin's Office Lot, Inspiration Park Parking Area, and then our new lot was completely full within the first half hour of the event, and full all through the entire evening, so we expected about 250 vehicles that used the lot that night. We had over 50 dancers from V School of Dance that came and entertained the crowd. We brought, the fire department helped us out by bringing their ladder truck to install the donated tree topper this year. We had 21 people the day of the event that put in over 81 hours of service, raised over $7,000 in sponsorship funds, had 21 different businesses involved in some capacity, and we estimated approximately 700 to 750 came out through the event throughout the entire day, so we were extremely pleased with that. I also put together some of our numbers for the actual year, this past year, that I wanted to share with you, so these are just some overall highlights. For business involvement in 2023, we had 94 businesses involved, with 47 of them being in, or 47 of them being within the DDA, other ones were outside of the DDA. We had six newly opened businesses get involved, and 43 of them were participating for the first time this year. We raised in total over $30,000 in sponsorship funds for all of the promotions events. When it comes to volunteer service, we have between our Board of Directors and Executive Committee, nine members that put in over 130 hours of volunteer service. Our Promotions Committee has 26 committee members, and they put in over 855 hours of volunteer service this year. We had over 11 special events run, and just over 3,000 visitors throughout the year to all of our different events at Inspiration Park. So I just wanna say thank you to all of the volunteers that come out, all of the township departments, officials, staff members that come out and support all of these events, and help out with all that the DDA does throughout the year. So thank you very much for a very exciting year that we had.
Thank you, Amy, it's been a great year, did really some good things for the community, and I'm super excited about it, thank you.
You're welcome.
And all the volunteers. Okay, moving on, Chief Madeline.
Good evening, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
First off, I was gonna show you, we got a little show and tell for you guys this evening, if you wanna take a look, but we, this was something that was approved in the budget last year for us, and we took delivery beginning of December, the crews have all been trained on it. These are bulletproof vests that are on our engines and rescues with the helmets to protect our crews if we ever have a situation in township.
He wants to see them.
For, you know, hopefully we never have one of those active shooter situations where we need to respond inside to a business or a school within our jurisdiction, but this is what we would utilize to protect ourselves in addition to the Sheriff's Department escorting us in to help the injured people that may be inside, so I have these if you guys are, wanna take a look at it.
How many sets do we have ready?
We've got four sets, our both engines and rescues have two vests, two helmets in each, and they came in a nice carrying bag that we gotta identify for each truck, so it's easy for you guys to tell the size and where they belong.
Yeah, that's cool, got your name on them and everything.
Yeah, they turn out really nice, the crews are happy with them, they're very comfortable, they're heavy, and to be honest with you, those are some of the lightest ones you can get out there right now versus what a lot of the fire departments do.
They're actually heavy.
Yeah, so those are actually ceramic plates inside there instead of steel, most fire departments buy the steel, which puts a lot more weight on the upper body of a firefighter, you know, going in potentially on the lid or carry someone out, which could cause more back injuries, bending over, lifting, because all the weight's up high, so we went with the ceramic, ceramic plates inside there to able to eat damage, which cut the weight of the best of the path compared to what it would've gone the other, other option. Yeah, so those are now in service, all the crews have been trained on them and are hopefully ready, never ready to use them, because we don't wanna do it. Next, for the month of December, Fire Prevention did 54 inspections totaling over just 1.2 million square feet, bringing us to a year total of 540 inspections and just over 17 million square feet throughout the township. This month, our entire staff participated in getting their CPR renewal for basic life support through the American Heart, and everyone is about 12 hours of training overall. And in addition to that, we sent four of our firefighters to CPR Instructor School, which will help with local businesses and any residents or organizations that are interested in obtaining their CPR certificate, we are able to provide that with members of the fire department, put that on. We have our new radios, we are operating on those, we've got the portables, and we're still in the process of getting the new radios installed in our trucks, we've got two more days of that, and we'll be 100% on the new system, which is operating 100% better than anything we've had over the last decade, sound is 100% better. And the last thing, we had a, one of the incidents we had on the freeway back in August, it was a rollover involving a commercial vehicle, and there was some hazmat spill out there, and had to have the hazmat team out, we did get some cost recovery on that incident from the carrier that caused the crash, so that is all I have, any other questions, or any questions?
All right, good chief, thanks for bringing that stuff in and letting us look at that.
No problem, thank you.
Thanks, okay, moving on, Lieutenant.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, how you doing?
Couple of quick updates, over the holidays, Flock Safety Systems, they emailed me several times, over the next couple of days, our permanently fixed cameras should be installed, I'll stay on them to make sure that gets done, and we can move forward with that. Shop for the Hero was a huge success, we were only supposed to have done 72, but we ended up doing over 90 kids, and they all had a good time, everybody got gift cards and baskets of food and everything that they normally get, so it was great. Last year, our calls for service, in Lion Township, we did 24,395 calls. I'll be furnishing the trial and report at the next township meeting, hopefully, as long as I can get, you know, 15 hours of free time to put it together. But yeah, very good, that should be close to 10,000 more calls for service than last year, so it's, obviously it's not all crimes, but we are keeping our guys busy, and I look forward to putting those two new positions that the board approved last month to use. How that works is, hopefully the next Board of Commissioners meeting, the under sheriff will go, ask the board to officially give the two new positions, and then I can get a date on when they'll actually start, and I'll relay that information to you when I have it. And that is all for me, does anyone have any questions?
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the Planning Commission.
Okay, we only had one meeting in the month of December, it's December 11, and we had several public hearings, the first one was the Preserve at Davis Creek, formerly known as the Chickeroe Property, and we did give a recommendation to the Township Board, and that was a six to one vote, but most, we had about eight to 10 residents come out and speak, and they were mostly concerned about the drainage and of course, traffic. And I thought Leslie did a great job explaining drainage, and anyways, but it still was recommended to the Township Board. We also had the Right of Way Measurements text amendment, which is on the agenda tonight, and this was per Carol, she recommended that we put this on the, or visit this text amendment, and then it's going, it's on tonight's agenda, and it's regarding the taking of property, she felt that we would, we're not taking property because of the road commission. We also had a public hearing for the minor site plan modifications, and that was just giving, not that we're taking anything away from Dave, but we thought that the minor text amendments, we are giving it to the admin board, which puts a lot more eyes on it, over 13 administrative people usually are on this committee, and, but Dave still has a big input on that, so. Then we went to old business, and we had the Center Point Medical Center Site Plan Review, and that is down by the Tim Hortons, and this was their second time coming to the Planning Commission, they had some, their site plan was kinda rough when they brought it back, so they listened to the Planning Commission and brought back the things that were requested, and that was actually approved by the Planning Commission that night. And then under new business, we had Hickory Creek Pathway Request, and that's because they have a pathway on the north side, and I think Leslie's making the determination of how much financial dollar amount that would be, and the Planning Commission felt that that was reasonable. And then we had, the last thing on our agenda was the Lion Medical Center, and that's the extension of the approval, which is right to the west of us, the Bob Lang development, and he's, he's done his pre-construction, but he still needed an extension, he was citing that he's having, people are having trouble getting finances to build the building, and his interest rates are so high, and he has for one year, and we granted that. Other than that, we did, oh, I should say, we did talk about the master plan, Brian passed it out, we had some comments, and as you see on tonight's agenda, we are asking for permission from the Township Board to send it out so that we can get the feedback, so. So that concludes my report, unless there's any questions, I'll be happy to take them or answer anything.
Okay.
And one more thing, we will not be having a meeting on our January 8th, there was only one agenda item, and that was pulled, so as of today, Catherine canceled our January 8th, so it'll be the next month, the two Mondays later, so just, just an FYI on that.
Okay, thank you, moving on to the ZBA.
We did not have a meeting in December, and we will not have a meeting in January.
Okay, you missed your meeting, you could've talked about it.
Catherine's in charge, and those were canceled.
I just teased you. All right, moving on to the Building Department, Dave.
I'll run through my numbers for you real quick, and we're still going pretty strong in there, so in November, you know, this is always, I'm a month behind always, so this is for the month of November, we had 22 new permits come in for residential homes compared to 10 last year, and our certificate of occupancies was, in November, we gave up 25 compared to 42 in '22. And total, total permits, which include all the accessory building, pools, basements, that stuff like that, is, was 696 a year to date, compared to 746 last year, pretty much on the same course. So we had the total inspections for, November was 924, and 446 of those were for the Building Department. So that's that with the numbers, so a couple of things that are coming up that are, that are gonna happen real soon is the Hudson Towns got all, are reused done, and they should be in this week to pick their permits up, so I'm sure they're pretty excited, and probably, I can see them breaking ground sometime, maybe even next week, which, that'll go pretty quick over there, because there's, there's, you know, there's no basements, so it's all footing, slabs, underground, and then they'll be going vertical, so we should see something in the next six weeks, when you're driving down to get your iced tea at McDonald's, you'll be seeing some, and, and we'll be sure that they keep the streets clean in there, so we'll keep on them, and then, so then we have a couple other commercial buildings that are getting ready for their CFOs, are the two daycare centers, the Learning Tree down on Pontiac Trail is real close to getting their final inspections as far as MEPs in the final building, and then, of course, the state is always, you know, they look hard at stuff, which is a good thing. And then the IXL Learning Center over on Milford Road, they're, we're just waiting on state approval, we've done all our inspections over there, and I think they're gonna be pretty much good to go, so those are gonna happen pretty soon, and we see, we see things still happening, so it's a good deal, that's it. Any questions?
Just one, not related to the stuff you mentioned tonight, but I know at one point you had brought up the potential for charging stations at the Amazon facility, I was actually asked about that by some people, I'm just curious if we would have an update the next few months or so, if you know anything about it or not, not to put you on the spot.
Well, oh yeah, we, we know about it, they have to still get more power down to them, and what our, what the fire department has asked for, they haven't totally agreed to, you know, where our shut offs are and that, so they can shut off a whole bank of these, you know, so that the fire department can get in there and, and, you know, put a, put a car out or something, so they're still working on the details on it, but I see it's gonna happen pretty soon, yep.
Okay, any other questions, Dave? All right, water report is gonna be kinda small tonight, basically, we're still running about 13, 14 grains hard, we've had zero problems with the system, it's been running flawless. I do have AOP and Eric coming to our next meeting in February to explain everything about the plan so far. So they will be here at the February meeting, and they will talk to you about South Hill, and the progress that we're getting through there, and I'd rather have them talk to you about that, and the chemicals, and what it's taken to get the water to the lower than the 13 to 14 grains, so that, that'll be a pretty fun meeting, they're, they'll let you know everything about it. So that's all I have on the water tonight, any questions? All right, and we're gonna close the reports, and we're gonna move on to the public hearings, and we do have four of them tonight. The first one is the termination of the Industrial Development District Number Five, and I think everyone here knows that we're terminating these as they come up, so, as they expire, we're bringing them to the board to terminate them. So the first public hearing, we're gonna open at 6:21, and this is for Development District Number Five, and if anyone would like to come up and have any say-so about that, or any comment about that district, now's the time to do that. Okay, seeing no one, we're gonna go ahead and close at 6:21, and move to the next one concerning, concerning the termination of Industrial Development District Number Six, and that's open to 6:21, okay. Seeing no one, we're gonna close it at 6:21, and we're gonna move to the termination of portion of Industrial District 10, and we'll open that meeting at 6:22. Okay, seeing no one, we're gonna close it at 6:22 and move on to the 2024 parts.
I didn't understand that.
Okay. It's probably a good thing. We're gonna move on to the last public hearing tonight, it's the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Draft 2024, and we're gonna open that at 6:22. Okay, seeing no one, we're gonna close it at 6:22, and we're gonna move on to unfinished business, which there's none, did you understand that? Okay, now we're gonna move on to new business. The first item in new business is the salary resolutions, and I think we have to go through these one by one, and I believe there's four of them.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-01 Supervisor's Salary.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, move on to the clerk.
I'll make a motion to approve the clerk's salary, Resolution 2024-02.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to the treasurer.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's salary for 2024.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to the trustees, I'll make a motion to approve the trustee's salary for 2024.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the first resolution for termination of District Number Five.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-05, Resolution approving the termination of Industrial Development District Number Five.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to the resolution, termination of District Number Six.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-06, Termination of Industrial Development District Number Six.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to the resolution of the termination of a portion of Industrial Development Number 10.
I'll make a motion for approval of Resolution 24-07, Termination of a Portion of Industrial Development District Number 10.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to the approval of the resolution to adoption of the 2024 Parks and Rec Master Plan, and authorization for staff to submit the plan to the Michigan DNR for review.
John, since the 30-day period of time in which the public has reviewed this document has passed, and the resolution, or I should say, the public hearing notice was published, and the public hearing was held, the next step would be to do this, so I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-08.
I'll support.
I had two corrections to the plan, actually.
Okay, well, we could have some conversation, go ahead.
Yeah, so the table of contents wasn't updated from the 2019 version, it still references the old public input topics, and in goal number five's action items, there's a typo from where it was changed from "he wrapped a township board," and it also removed the word "connect."
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to include making those two corrections to the plan.
Yes, and I will still second that.
Okay, everybody good now? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to the consideration to accept the water rate study. Anybody have any questions about that, I know we talked about it a little bit, we, I really believe that it was done pretty well, and it'll keep us legitimate going forward, so.
John, would the plan be to have them updated each year?
Yes, yep, he's gonna stay with us, yep.
Yeah, to review and press just in case. Yeah, plus, if we approve it tonight, then it's gonna take us some time to get this all corrected in the system and change all the rates and stuff, so.
Appreciate it, Vic Cooper, not only do I enjoy saying Vic Cooper-Wasser, it's fun to say, but he did an excellent job going through the rate study, and I appreciate it having all of his expertise.
Yeah, I'll tell you, he's a really smart guy, and he's a really good guy to have, looking at this every year, he'll keep us very safe. Okay, if everyone is good with that, motion's in order.
I'll make a motion to accept the water rate study as presented.
I'll support that.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to the sewer rates, this is something we do every year, and it's calculated by contract, and this is how it come out. I don't know if anyone has any questions about it, but this goes every year, we have to do it.
Actually, Rena did the calculations, so I feel really confident with that, and we did not raise our share.
No, we don't ever raise our share.
Yeah, so I just.
Yeah, this, this is actually the cost of a new connection, not, has nothing to do with the ongoing quarterly costs, so no one, even though these rates are going up, it would be for new homes, new connections, not, not existing customers who are on the system.
But that increase is not coming to us.
Correct.
No, it's going to Lion Waste Water.
Yeah, we haven't raised our rates, I don't know, in the past, what, four years?
Yeah.
So we keep our rates the same, there's nothing we can do with that.
Contractually, we can't, right?
We try to keep ours right where they always were, so. Okay, well, motion be in order if everybody agrees with it.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-9, approving the new sewer rates, and I'll just list for the motion, Lion Township will collect $7,949.55 for Lion Waste Water per share sold, and the township will collect $3,665.35 per township REU sold.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to the consideration, approval of the resolution for the adoption of the utility fee schedule revisions for the water rates.
So for this one, I had a question, the resolution specifies only the quarterly rate for the one-inch meter.
We got rid of the five eights, we deleted.
Right, but the larger meters, I believe, had a larger fixed portion to their quarterly bill that changed from what it was, it's in the utility fee schedule, but it's not in the resolution.
The resolution online?
I, I don't know, that's, I'm, I'm asking, like, do we need to just add something referencing the rate schedule, or do we need to put the numbers directly in here to the other sizes?
Are you talking about item number one?
Yeah, therefore, in item one, it only says the 4910, whereas in the utility fee schedule, it lists different numbers for the other sizes, and then the, the per volume rate is the same, but.
Right, right, well, on item two, online, it does show the amount for each size.
I thought that was the capital charge portion.
That is, but for, for number one, the rate is regardless of this meter size, right, the usage rate?
Yeah.
Maybe we just eliminate the reference to a one-inch meter, because I believe the rate is the same regardless.
Is, because it's in the, that's the readiness to serve charge, right, which is in section five of the fee schedule, which is 4910 for one inch, but like, for a two-inch. Which is in the section five of the fee schedule, which is forty-nine ten for one inch, but like for a two inch, it's one fifty-seven twelve.
The Resolution, so on item one references the water quarterly rate, we calculated at forty-nine ten for a one inch meter and eighteen oh six per thousand cubic feet. I'll look at those here.
And then on, on page two of the, uh, Utility Fee Schedule under section five readiness to serve, that's where the forty-nine ten comes from, but it's got other numbers for the other meter sizes.
Okay, so really the item one probably should just reference the.
I think, yeah, the easiest thing, I think, is just incorporate the numbers in the other document by, by reference, but I don't, is that okay, Deb, or do we have to spell them out all in the Resolution?
You could if they're not changing.
They, I believe they are changing, 'cause it's a new structure.
Is it this attachment?
Yeah.
Yeah, so item one really.
It's that paper.
The whole.
So several of the fees changed as a result of the water study, so item one in the Resolution would probably just reference the eighteen oh six per thousand cubic feet and eliminate the forty-nine ten for a one inch meter. And then item three, the readiness to serve charge, it varies, it's just whether or not you'd list all of them to your point for each size, right?
Yeah, true, yeah, I forgot to look at number three there, so, yeah, I guess if, so I guess then I would say we could s- strike, yeah, the forty-nine ten for a one inch meter reference from the part one of our, therefore's, and then number three, I guess we could just say, you know, as specified in.
In the schedule.
The fee schedule.
Utility fee schedule attached as Exhibit A or whatever you wanna call it. So.
I mean, can you do that for number two and three, just reference?
Um, I mean, we could, it's just the numbers were already there for two, so I wasn't.
Either way, I think it, it would be accurate.
Yeah.
I believe so, right, if you reference the schedule itself for number three.
Makes it easier to read, I agree with that.
Okay, so we wanna strike them from number two as well and just include the reference in both places for the Resolution?
I think that makes sense.
That'd be more consistent.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, then I would.
Makes it easier to read, I, I mean, I like that, but it makes it more friendly to understand it.
Then I would, uh, make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten as amended.
I'll support.
Okay, motion in support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're gonna move on to the ordinance text amendment for right of way measurements, right of way measurements, uh, a little bit. Does everyone understand this right of way?
Yeah.
The reason for having this?
So we don't take it, yeah.
Well, I wanna make sure everyone understands it because it's something we have to do and I think, Deb, you, your firm is why you're dealing with this.
More aware of it, I was involved in this too, um, currently the ordinance, you know, measures the right of way or the setbacks from the planned right of way line as opposed to the actual right of way line. And the planned line, sometimes we, you know, it's not part of the right of way yet, so we, we did have someone object to that as, you know, if you want to have that as right of way, then it needs to be paid for and taken by the road commission or whatever, so it's, it's a point well made.
Yeah, that was, I think, the Pontiac Trail situation we had, that we did have a problem arise because of this.
So I guess my, my concern, and I think that explanation kinda helped a little bit, was I know it's not our job to get right of way for the road commission, but I don't wanna be in a situation where we miss an opportunity to get right of way for a future road improvement um, that may come our way, um, obviously those are few and far between nowadays, but, um, if we think this won't inhibit it and push that cost down the road into an acquisition of right of way versus getting it for free.
What's your thought?
To that point, is, I'm sorry.
What's your thought about that?
No, um, we did, I, I, I don't know if it was Leslie or Brian that did check with Oakland County to see if they wanted that right of way, you know, when we, you know, when we were in the throes of the whole discussion, you know, and they didn't, so, and I think that's a prudent thing to do if we're aware when we're looking at a site plan that, you know, there is planned right of way that's showing.
You can always ask them to dedicate it, it's just you can't require it, correct?
Right.
So, there's some circumstances, I'm sure that you, it would, people would still donate it.
Yeah, and, and in this case, it would, it had to do with the setback measurement at the time, but, um, Oakland County said they had no intention of acquiring, acquiring it, so.
Where, say, you know, it's an old acreage parcel, the right of way was never actually dedicated, the property line is the center line of the road. Is it, so is it, so even though it's not dedicated, we still.
Do the, now with this ordinance amendment, yes.
I just, I just don't wanna wind up with a situation where we and something changes and we have to go, oh, hey, we actually have that there.
This is, it's like gonna be this weird thing where it's like having missing teeth coming down a road right of way, so the difference between a planned right of way line is significant in certain circumstances, so then the question becomes, so we can all pretend that we don't we can all pretend that, you know, we, we, we're not gonna buy it, but somebody's gonna buy it, the road commission doesn't want it now, but they might in the future, but if we let somebody develop right up to setback knowing full well that there is planned future right of way there, now, in thirty years, people are gonna say, what they knew this was coming, you know, there's this kinda disconnect, I think, between maybe where we're at from a planning standpoint and where the road commission's at as far as property, which they don't spend money on that unless it's their project right now, and even then it's like a fight, you know, it takes forever, so I'm not saying that, that we shouldn't do this, I just don't know then.
And then I think still, like, if you have a planned development, for example, it, you still different, this, these are just straight site plans, the, the calculation then is off of the prescriptive right of way, which is thirty-three feet off of center line rather than sixty, which is your plan twenty-seven foot di- difference.
So in order to really protect ourselves long term, do we need to go back and change the front yard setbacks? accommodate for future right of way, and I know it's a different way of saying the same thing, but if someone were to challenge us. We're not taking that property away from you, you still own it and you're, you can, you know, have a pick. You just can't put a parking lot, you can't build a building in that area, I, I don't know, I mean setbacks are there for a reason, at some point someone said, well, that's a justifiable number, forty feet's a justifiable number for whatever reason, so should it be fifty, should it be sixty? Um, that's just sort of like a food for thought, otherwise, we're just saying, yeah, we know we're gonna no one's gonna buy it now, so I guess shucks, we'll just have to let it go and then pretty soon we'll be trying to buy it anyway, but instead we'll have buildings or infrastructure in it that wouldn't have we protected it by increasing the size of the front yard setback.
That's a good point.
I mean, I guess, like, this is what everybody's struggling with, this isn't enough same law, we're all dealing with this, and every road commission, every road agency's struggling to twenty years from now. And that wouldn't even be realistic, but to protect it, because protecting that future right of way protects everybody's ability to have, you know, good access and have, you know, roads widened necessary and approved where it's necessary so that we can all travel the roads more safely, so it's this vicious circle, I guess, I don't know what the answer is, but.
Be the thing to discuss at the administrative meeting, start, start that discussion there.
Right.
What do you think about adding to the
I think it's something to talk to.
Doesn't sound like a bad.
I don't know how else you protect it without doing that, and I think the answer is flat out, listen, we know that there will be future issue, you're gonna have an issue, it's gonna be a headache for all of us, so let's just acknowledge that and create the right of way, that we won't have to have this additional setback, so have to have a front yard setback that accommodates for a planned future right of way, you don't wanna do that, you can reduce your setback by donating it to the township, to the road commission.
Or we could think about a text amendment too, in addition to that, it's a good thought planned right of way, you know, then that increases by X number of feet.
Right, and I think that's where the connection with the road commission as to what
Well, their future right of way is sixty feet throughout the whole township.
Oh.
It's every road, so, but I think if it does warrant further township in this location in particular, the project that you don't even have center left turn lanes and even just adding one lane of traffic, you're, you need right of way.
Especially when most of the roads don't have a proper shoulder to begin with, so by the time you add that lane, it's not just twelve feet, it's twelve feet plus four, probably decide to have a more appropriate shoulder.
Right. Right, and when you buy right of way, I mean, you buy everything that's in it, so.
Right.
Yeah, we'll put that on, talk about this month if that sounds.
So what do you wanna do with this?
Do we have any, like, are we putting ourselves more at risk if we this to wait if we, see if we wanna add that, or?
I prefer to wait.
Yeah, I mean.
Or else we're gonna send next signals, I guess.
I, I agree, I just don't wanna.
No, it's a taking claim, I mean, we can resolve it by defense would be.
Well, right now they would need a setback variance from the existing ordinance. In the process.
I guess we're looking for your thought, Deb, would it be your advice to pass this?
Well, if we're thinking about.
Give you guys at the admin level time to talk. Work with, Deb and Carol.
Do you wanna table it, you wanna table it? I mean, is that your thought, table it?
Right, there's a missing piece to this.
Why don't we go ahead and table it then for thirty days to the next meeting, wanna do that, somebody wanna make? All right, we'll table that, um, moving on to the minor site modifications and that's what we talked about earlier. This one is just a text amend- amendment to put the minor site plan approvals into the of just having Dave be the one up there moving these, nothing against Dave. He's part of the. So.
Yes, I'll be there.
Somebody wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number zero two dash minor site plan modification amendment AP dash twenty-three dash sixty-six.
Is this second reading?
Two second reading.
Second, it's, yes, to the second, to the second.
I'll support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh. Plan for distribution.
Yes.
Please.
So, there is simply put, the Planning Enabling Act requires that the township prior to adopting the master plan, uh, puts the document review for a sixty-three day period, so it goes to Oakland County, it goes to all three days, so we have to take action tonight to start that process. And that's what this request is.
Thank you, it is, I appreciate.
It's what the planning commission is requesting.
Yep. Moving forward, so a motion would be in order.
A motion, go ahead, you're on the planning commission.
I'll make a motion to approve or to authorize Lion kinda data December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Support.